We've got a pretty light agenda. It's the end of a long week at the end of a long year. And Julia, Director Brim Edwards cannot join us tonight, but thank you, Director Moore for being here. So we do have a quorum. So we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Karen, do we have anyone signed up for public testimony today?
No.
I didn't think so, but I always want to ask. So I think what we're going to do today is just get a legislative overview from Courtney. We can dive into any of those remaining issues that are happening under the legislature. We'll do a brief Rose Quarter update in terms of where we are and then any other questions folks have.
Sounds good. I can start with, I'll do a legislative update, Rose Quarter, and then if we have time at the end, since it's not on the agenda, I'll give you a quick overview on vaccine clinics that we're working on, since that is intergovernmental. And I didn't think to add it to the agenda when we talked earlier this week. So sorry about that. Well, the legislature is, it's, we're dwindling, the days are dwindling, you know. I need constitutional signee die is June 28th. And obviously it's the 10th, so we have just a little over two weeks left and there's still a lot hanging out there. Not necessarily relevant to us, but just the work is not done. And so right now, there's typically, there's a lot of, a lot of policy bills have made it through ways and means by now. And there's still a lot held up there. So the agendas are getting really long. And there's just kind of sheer number of days left makes it hard to get through it all. So there's a sense, I think, generally accepted by lobbyists like me that there might be some good bills that don't, that just die a procedural death before the end of session. Hopefully nothing that, that we're really concerned about. Things are pretty well on track. One bill that we talked a lot about is the class size bargaining bill. That bill is not passed yet. It passed the House on Monday, I believe. But it has to get concurrence from the Senate because there was an amendment added after it had already passed the Senate to narrow the bill to focus on Title I schools. So I, I'm getting good vibes from the people that matter on what I'm concurring with it. But we don't know yet if that's going to happen. Hopefully it does. And as a reminder, that was the long perennial bill that, you know, that OEA has focused on to mandate bargaining as a subject or mandate class size as a subject of bargaining. And we were able to get an amendment added so that we could focus on the schools that need it most are specifically Title I schools. And that was a Speaker Kotex amendment. So that one's still out there. And the budget, as you know, that's been the hot topic. The budget passed both the House and the Senate at nine point.
Courtney, just before, just before we go on to budget on that bill, I mean, just, you know, and, and I've been catching up a little bit on this, but that bill really has very little impact on PPS right now because of our existing contract. So any, any change that we would make to say, you know, would, would, would require additional, you know, bargaining with.
Yes. Any changes. I think it's more, the, the larger point is we've had a certain experience in Portland with our contract having, having these overload payments. And so we were able to share some information that helped focus that center equity in this conversation that hadn't been a focus in the past when we had conversations about this particular bill. So it was a good, a really good move to focusing a little bit differently on it. But yeah, you're right. It doesn't generally impact us unless we go back and change things.
Great, thanks.
Yeah. So the budget has passed at nine, three in both chambers. There's still a lot of work happening or behind the scenes to see if we can't get that number up in another venue, in another vehicle. I don't, my, I'll be honest with you, I'm, I'm going to be really surprised if they do that. But, but we got it to nine, three. It was nine, one in the beginning and that was, I mean, it's still insufficient. I know, I know Dr. Moore loves to talk about this and, and I agree with you.
Actually, I don't love to talk about it. I just feel compelled to talk about it. I would love not to talk about it. I would love not to have to talk about it.
Ditto. Ditto. So we're, we're trying to, you know, trying for a hail Mary here to see if we can't get a little bit more given the revenue forecast that we've all, you know, been aware of epic, in epic proportions. You know, there's a lot more available than anyone could have expected. The other places that we're looking at trying to increase some funding is around, around regional inclusive services, which is a new name for regional programs. We're trying to educate lawmakers because regional programs is not a term that most people understand or know. And so we're, there's a little bit of remarketing or a marketing campaign, I guess, happening with that. That we're working through that. It's a different budget. It's a grant and aid budget. The, it's 20, I think it's like maybe Cassie helped me out, 20% lower. What is the number? I've been looking at this a lot lately. Anyway, it's been historically underfunded for your decade. And so we're trying to bump the number of 10 million above what we, what was in the proposed budget. So it's not a lot of money, but everybody's asking right now for everything. So there's a lot of prioritizing, you know, prioritizing happening in ways and means. So we'll see. We had a good conversation last week with Senator Frederick. You know, who's the, the chair of the subcommittee to see, and he, he seemed very concerned. So that was helpful, but we'll, we'll see how things shake out in committee and ways and means.
Wait, he's concerned about the regional?
Yeah, he was concerned that he hadn't been aware that it had been so, so underfunded. And we shared sort of, we've had, I think, oh, here's the 20%. We've had a 20% increase in students in these service, needing these services and the budget is not kept up. They hadn't kept up even up, even before we added 20%. So he was, it was happy, I was happy to hear that he had concerns about that because sometimes it falls on deaf ears. And everybody, you know, is asking for.
We have inclusive services that could respond to that.
Yeah. And some of it, you know, we have those programs, we, a lot more students are coming, are being diagnosed with autism or being referred to those services. And that I think is a big part of that 20%, but, and I don't have all the, the specifics on what percentage of that is autism spectrum disorder, but I would imagine it's a pretty high number of that 20%. Anyway, so there's a lot hanging out there. I think for, for our, from our perspective, there's a lot of good things that have passed. Retaining teachers of color. Cassie, remind me where that one lives right now. It passed out of rules. That's a good thing.
Two thousand and one.
Yeah.
Is, yeah, it, it just had its, its work session and public hearing on the eighth, so it's waiting for a floor on the Senate side.
Another, another bill that, that one does not have a fiscal attached to it. So that one just needs to get scheduled on the floor and there are only so many days in the week. So it's, they're going to start running, we're, we're in the deadline, we're in the part of session where deadlines have, you know, been thrown out the window and everything is 24 hours notice. So it's quick. Which is stressful, but also, you know, trying, they're just trying to get through things. And then of course, the big exciting, not really relevant to us, news today is that they had the Special Committee on Conduct had the December 21st committee to have the conversation about whether they expel Representative Neerman for his efforts in opening the Capitol to people that shouldn't have been in the Capitol on that day. And I, I was in meetings this afternoon, so I didn't get a chance to watch and I don't know where things are in that committee. And maybe, I don't know, Cassie, if you watched it or not, but it, it's very interesting because it's the first time in that state's history that they've had this procedure.
Just, I was getting live text updates about how it was going. I'm going to go back and watch it, but it sounded like he was there to provide a defense and it was based in what you would expect it to be based in that he believes people should have had access to the building to begin with. So I don't know that that's one that'll stand up in court.
Yeah. So that'll be, that's an interesting case. I particularly look in at Nathaniel and Parker because it's just historic and fascinating. It's a good case study for our students. Yeah. So I'll pivot us a little bit and Patrick's here from our facilities team to offer any insight. And if you have questions, but on the Rose Quarter, you know, the last time we met, we had members of the team, the project team from, from ODOT come give an overview of the project, talk a little bit about some of their, their alternatives that they're exploring. Just kind of update everybody on where things are in design. And of course, they were met with lots of good questions from you all about lots of history of this project and how it impacts or, you know, we think will impact our school. And so where we are now, the, and Shanice is not available tonight, but I, I know I can give you an update on sort of the community engagement side. So we are on track, at least as of about a week, a little less than a week ago, on track to collect feedback from the, from a forum to Tubman families, a Q and A session and additional partnership with AVT by next week. And that includes Harriet Tubman Middle School and, and the feeder schools. So we're really trying to get some, some insight from the community on what they are interested in talking about and hearing. And, and that will, I think, inform the board. So more to come on that. I wish it lined up better with this meeting, but you know, those things never happen the way you want them to. And then we have also, and this is why Patrick's here, we've also engaged the services of PBS Engineering and Environmental. And they're doing a deep dive review of some other, of some of the studies that have come out over air quality and ODOT recommendations and all, all kinds of data and details that we don't have the expertise or necessarily to, to analyze. So they, they're on board doing that work as we speak. Patrick is, do you know what their timeline is?
Yeah, Courtney, we should get a draft report from them mid-July with a final report due end of July. Yep. They're, they're taking a look at what you just mentioned, some of the claims ODOT's made. Their plan and assumptions that they're making.
Yeah, and it's mostly air quality and soil, I think. Is that right?
Yeah, but we're, we're also having them look at some of the seismic claims and then look at the noise wall. And see if, you know, they're saying there's going to be a reduction in noise and they're going to take a look at those assumptions as well.
So is this going to be specific to Tubman, like site specific?
Yes. At this point, yes.
Okay. Can I ask how much we're paying for that? More or less roughly?
Yeah, I don't have that off the top of my, but I'll, I'll get you an answer on that.
Yeah, I'd appreciate that.
Should be easy to find. Yeah, no problem.
One would think that this should actually be happening on ODOT's dime, but it's not.
Yeah, we'll get, we'll get you that information. And I think, I know Teresa Fagan from the, from, I always say downstairs because she's downstairs when we're physically in the building, but from facilities team is going to do a quick write-up on all of this for you. So I'll share that when I get it from her. She's a little closer to the PBS work than I am.
You know what, Courtney? I've got it right in front of me. I'll just forward it to you right now. I think I should have forwarded it before the meeting.
It's okay, we'll get it out.
Okay.
And then, so community engagement, PBS work. And then of course, the, the kind of conversation, obviously ODOT is not interested in paying to relocate the school. And we're not quite at a point where we're asking to do that because we haven't heard that that's what the community wants. But I think, as I've told others, you know, we got to consider all options, right? And think, think through what that looks like. What does that cost? What is, what's needed to make X, Y, and Z option happen? If there was a conversation about relocating, that's obviously a huge expense that we do not have a budget for. The, the estimate provided from Dan Young's team is about 85 million, but that does not include land. So it's in the, you know, it's in the big numbers category. And so that, and that's, that's based on Kellogg. So it could be up or down, but that's a pretty good estimate, I think. So with ODOT saying they can't pay with us not having a budget, what does that look like? So, so we're exploring other conversations, you know, having conversations with the treasurer's office and others to see like, are there bonding ways to do this? Is there another way to pay for something like this that's, you know, not taking away from, from our general fund? Because obviously that's not going to fly and it shouldn't be our responsibility.
Is, is somebody contemplating potential lawsuit? If we end up having to incur costs to at least recover costs?
I can't speak for legal. We, you know, talked to Liz. It has not been contemplated as of yet. I can say that. Obviously there are other lawsuits going on with the no more free ways, folks. We are not party to those, but they, you know, whatever happened, any, those kinds of things would impact us if it went, you know, in their, in their favor. What else can I tell you about that?
So yeah, so bottom line, Courtney, we, we're finishing up our engagement work, which is really important. And I think we need to keep coming back to emphasize that, that, you know, this, this can't be just a school board, you know, decision about what happens with Tubman, right? We have to be involved in the community, finishing that up. That's going to help inform sort of our, you know, sort of next steps around this. And, you know, continuing that gathering of information and then, and then, yeah, the, you know, the question is, you know, if this project is going to continue, what are the funding sources that could be available? State, you know, federal, you know, local, other things. What are the funding sources that could be available? Okay. I think that makes sense. And I think we should definitely put this on the next, next IGC meeting.
Yeah, and we'll have, you know, Director Moore, this I think is your last intergovernmental committee meeting that I should have led with that. I'm really grateful for your service on the board and on this committee and your interest in all of these issues over the last. I mean, I've been here, you've been here almost as long as I have. So just really appreciate that and wish you all the best. And, you know, come, come back as a citizen and give public comment.
We'll be careful what you wish for.
But I think, you know, setting that aside, we, we are going to have a new board in a few weeks. And so it'll be a good opportunity to re-educate our new board members about this project. And, and, you know, I think it's a, it's a, this has been on the table for a long time. And we've had lots of contemplation, letter writing, resolutions, all of it. And so I think, you know, we have to keep asking the questions and getting the information that helps you make a decision as a board, but with the community's feedback and input. So we'll just, I think putting this on the next agenda is a good idea. And I don't know when that next meeting will be. I don't know how that things are going to change over the summer, but.
Yeah, it's funny. I, when I said next meeting, then I'm like, oh, I don't think we have a next meeting scheduled. And I'm not even sure I, you know, who, who will be, who will be chairing that next meeting.
Well, I will add it to my list to make sure we don't forget to add this to the next agenda.
Right.
Because it's a really important issue and we need to keep, keep on it.
Before we leave the topic altogether, and since this is my swan song. I do think the boards, either this one or the next one, needs to wrestle with the dilemma of participation or not in, in this. I forget what it's called, the executive committee or whatever it's called. Because our presence does mean something. It is symbolic of something. And I think we need to figure out what it's symbolic of. Because if we are persistently or if ODOT is persistently engaging in how do I put this? Purveying information whose accuracy is debatable. Our continued presence could be seen as an endorsement of, of that behavior. So, I mean, I get the, you know, being at the table has certain advantages. It also has certain disadvantages. And, and I think, I think we're actually past the time when the board needs to wrestle with that dilemma and make an actual decision, one way or the other.
I think I think it's interesting, you know, I'm, I'm, I'll just admit right up from my biases is to be at the table. Because I think that's where you get, you know, you say, and walking away provides a, a rhetorical point and a public point, but it's only one, right? Sort of a, it's a point in time that there's, there's something about, you know, PBS walking away and then you sort of lose the influence. That said, and I've shared that with Rita before, I was troubled even at ODOT's presentation to us, how they talked about PPS as sort of a positive, right? That PBS's involvement, they're working with us, they're dealing with these things. And they're sort of using that externally. And so I am, I am less concerned about what our presence at the table shows because I think, I think our presence shows what we wanted to show and depends on what we're saying. I am more concerned about how, how ODOT is portraying that to other people. And I, and I think that's your point, Rita, which is you have little control over that.
And there's a, I mean, I can give you a citation. There was an article in the bike, what's the bicycle?
Bike Portland.
Yeah, that one. It was an interview with, or it included an interview with Joanne Hodesky. And she reported that ODOT had said to her, because she had mentioned the Harriet Tubman question. And she reported that ODOT had said to her, well, you know, PPS is still at the table, so they're pretty good. You know, they're, they're good with it. And that is not an accurate depiction of PPS's position, at least as far as I understand what we're saying.
Yeah.
So I, I think there are. I am deeply concerned about the message that is being conveyed by our continued presence.
I, I'm inclined to, to agree with you, Director Moore. Well, and also Director Scott, I think having seat at the table is valuable. But I think if simply being there somehow indicates, or ODOT is making it indicate that we are somehow supportive is just false. I don't think that is permissible. I don't know what we could necessarily do about it, but that doesn't sit right with me.
You know, and for me, the, yeah, no, I, I may think again, to the extent it, that's something that we need to watch. And, and you know, I mean, I think, you know, everyone see Albina Vision Trust letter yesterday, it came around, I think, I think to everyone. Did you send it around, Courtney, didn't you?
Director Brim Edwards sent it around.
Okay. Anyway, it's a pretty scathing letter, you know, continuing to be about, about ODOT and their behavior. What I, I think the, you know, and, and actually I think I'm in full agreement with, with, with Rita about, you know, keeping an eye on this. For me, I, I think this project is going to happen. Maybe it won't, right? Maybe there are other forces in the community that, that sort of derail it. If it's going to happen, the most important thing is that we make sure that PPS students are protected and taken care of. That's why I think being at the table is really important because I, I know if we're not at the table and the project goes forward, I guarantee that our students will not be taken into consideration and taken care of. And so that to me is the risk of, of walking away. But there's absolutely risk being there. And for me, I, I don't view it as a decision point so much as an ongoing conversation that, you know, you know, and maybe it's every time we should be asking the question, right? You know, are we still at a place where this is beneficial to us and our students? You know, or do we, do we cross a point, a point where it's not? I'm also hopeful, I, you know, I, I thought it was interesting that ODOT, you know, they say, oh, we can't. Well, they kind of said they couldn't pay for it until I asked them the question. They can pay for it. They don't have the money in their budget, which I understand, but this, this, this budget is increased already by a couple hundred million dollars. If, if, if ODOT leadership wanted to, if the governor wanted to, if the legislature wanted to, they could easily throw 80 to a hundred million dollars into this project budget, right? It wouldn't be, you know, to actually, actually make, make this happen. So, and, and I believe Brendan or one of the staff people at the meeting kind of acknowledged that. It's not a can't. It's a, we don't have it right now. So I, I want to make sure we don't get.
Agree with that, Director Scott. I think it's, they can't put on the record in a public meeting with us that they're just like willing to do, but that they could. Because then, you know.
Right, right. So, and maybe there's some other things that could happen, you know, maybe, I mean, I, you know, and, and, and this is a question, you know, with Albina Vision Trust, there's a lot that needs to happen there too. I mean, maybe, maybe a federal infrastructure bill, knock on wood, you know, can include funding for, you know, for, for a lot of this, right? And there can be sort of a, a win there, you know, where, where we actually transform or, or re, reconstitute that neighborhood. So. Courtney, anything, so it sounds like the next meeting, and, and I might say, you know, Roseanne, let, let's talk a little bit. I'm not sure what the protocols are. I think it, given where it is right now in June, it might make sense to have an intergovernmental committee meeting in July to wrap up the session and what happened, get a further update, you know, on this engagement work at, at Rose Quarter. And the only question is, am I allowed to still share those meetings after July 1 or does everything reset? So.
Typically we set after July 1, let the board sort of, after the board leadership is announced, then the new configuration of boards are, of the committees are set.
Okay. I worry a little bit about if that, if that takes some time, which it will, and then getting things scheduled, get it well. Maybe we could put a meeting on the calendar for mid-July that someone will run.
We also typically do a, well, there'll be a end of session report. And also we tend to do something in a full board meeting, but, so that could be another alternative to, to a July meeting.
And actually, if we're talking about the results of the engagement work at Tubman, that actually is something the full board should hear. So that's, that's a good idea.
Yeah, I will bring that up with board leadership on the 16th.
Great. Thanks, Roseanne. Okay, other, other questions on that, on the legislative session, Courtney, other things to update us on?
Yeah, I can give you a quick vaccine update if, oh yeah, in that. So we're, we have a few things coming up that we're working on. We've got a, Fabian is working with a group called Feed the Mass to do a two-day event to celebrate Juneteenth on the 19th and 20th. On the 19th, Multnomah County is going to partner with us to do a vaccine clinic there. It's BIPOC focused, but it's open to anybody. So we're going to be kicking out information Monday and Tuesday through community, through, you know, David Roy's shop to get the word out. We're, we're a supporting actor in all of these, right? Because we're not the vaccinators, but that's an exciting opportunity. We've got a clinic with OHSU at Harrison Park on the 21st for the first dose. And then a July 12th, I think, is the second dose. And we're working with all the culturally specific organizations down in Southeast in the Jade District with Apoano and Asian Health Coalition, et cetera. And so that's going to, that's looking like it'll shape up to be a great event. We're really trying to hit areas that the county has said they need help with. So we know that East of 82nd is a challenging population to vaccinate right now, according to the county. Much of that is not in Portland public, but we can do our part as it, as it makes sense. We're also working with the county, they're going to, this is kind of a win because they usually send their school-based health center staff home for the summer, but they're going to open Roosevelt's Health Clinic on the 30th of June for a first dose clinic. And then a second dose clinic on the 21st of July at, at their, at their space. So that's exciting. And I think it also, you know, we don't need to reinvent the wheel. We have the space in our schools to do just this. So I think that's been a really fruitful conversation, just even the fact that they're willing to bring staff back for that is, is a good thing. And I think, I think all these extra COVID resources are helping make that happen, right? Because you got to pay people. So we're, those are the three big things we're thinking about for this month. And then we're starting to look ahead to, you know, how do we, how do we get students access to vaccines before school starts? And how do we make that, you know, what is our role in that? So we're starting to do some brainstorming about, about this. It's, it's a challenge because there's so many opportunities out there happening in the community. The county's got their sites. A lot of nonprofits are doing, are doing specific events for their communities. But especially as students return to school in the fall, we want them vaccinated. So those that are eligible. And it also gives us an opportunity to kind of set stuff up and then mirror that when we get, when our younger kids get, are eligible. So, you know, schools are going to become more of a hub for vaccines, I think, as we get even further into the, the lower grades. So yeah, there's lots, lots of, a lot of meetings, a lot of partnership. It's really exciting. We had a meeting with the county chair today. You know, everybody's just really coming together to try to figure this out. So we'll keep, keep, keep brainstorming. And if anybody has ideas, send them my way. But it's a, doing the best we can now that we've hit saturation.
Yeah, thank you for all that. It's, I have, I'm old enough that I remember being, getting polio vaccine in school. It was huge.
It's a, it's a big deal and it's, you know, we're not public health experts, but we have a lot of space and we have a lot of access to information to share. And that's our role here. And, and I think a lot, as I've said before, a lot of people feel more comfortable at a school than a pharmacy or at a school than a, you know, their medical clinic. And the convention center is shutting down next week. So there's just more opportunity to do this locally, like really, like I guess micro locally.
Yeah, no, I think that's right. And it's great. I'm really glad that we're sort of putting ourselves out there and offering the resources and help that we can. So.
Yeah, I'll keep you guys posted. I'll, you know, as we get more of this kind of thing set up, we'll, we'll share it out.
Cool. Courtney, anything else? Rita, anything else? Anyone else? I mean, I don't mean to be anticlimactic about this, but we have a two-hour work session coming up. So I'm also fine to, you know, take back the, the next 25 minutes. So. I mean, I don't mean to be anticlimactic about this, but we have a two-hour work session coming up, so I'm also fine to, you know, take back the, the next twenty-five minutes, so.
Yeah, thank you for uh convening and um the Director Moore, thank you for everything.
I got you. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
One, one last congratulations to Nathaniel. That's really awesome.
Yep, absolutely, absolutely. And Nathaniel, I did miss, wait, where are you headed off to? I feel like we asked that question and you deferred, but I probably missed the actual answer.
Um, I'm also not answering that publicly at this time.
But that's fine, okay. I wanted to make sure I hadn't missed anything.
Yeah.
All right. Well, y- you have to let us know whenever you are ready to let us know, so. Good, okay.
We're excited for you no matter what. And Parker, we'll see you soon.
Oh, yeah. I'm, I'm not going anywhere for the time being, um, but I'd also like to uh, extend my appreciation to both Nathaniel and uh Rita. It's, it's been a, a pleasure, um, and, and quite the experience serving with the, with the both of you. Um, and, you know, I've, I've, I've learned a lot. Um, and Rita, I look forward to, to hearing what, what comes next for you and I hope, I hope you do uh come back. You know, pop in the BESE when that's a thing that can happen.
Yeah, what office is Rita going to run for next?
Ooh.
Mayor, county chair, maybe throw Heather Ring for governor.
Catch up on sleep first.
There is that, there is.
So, so she gets one week um to catch up on sleep and then I've got my money on city council.
Hmm.
Oh. I don't know about that one. Yeah. Talk about a thankless job. That's.
Yeah.
Did anyone hear a denial? I didn't hear a denial. That was a non-denial denial. Oh, now she's frozen. All right, well, I'm going to go ahead before, uh, yeah, we, we, we go to any more rabbit holes. All right, thanks, everybody. Have a good night. I'll see y'all soon.
All right, good night.
Good night.